Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our April twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three LaSueur City Council meeting. It's time I will call the meeting to order. We'll begin. Council members, we're all presented with the agenda for tonight and over the weekend. Hope you have time to look it over. Reach out with any questions at this time. I won't entertain any motions to approve tonight's agenda. So, thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Williams, thank you. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The highest having. Moving on to public hearing, we will start with the nine oh one Ferry Street assessment vacations. If, uh, Councilor, I'm sorry, City Minister Roby, you want to walk us through that, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one here is regarding the proposed vacation easements at nine oh one Ferry Street, which is the current site of the Mitchell High School and future site of the new elementary school. So, really quick, before we propose a motion to go into the open public hearing, I just to give overview. City has been working closely with the school district and the school district's planning team. Some of them are represented tonight on the new elementary school project that will go at the intersection of Kingsway and Ferry. During the due diligence of that process, there were two easements that were located and on the project site that are deemed to be able to be vacated. As part of the vacation process, a public hearing is required, and so a public hearing was noticed for tonight, so we can, the council can hear any feedback or comments from the public regarding the vacation of those easements. The first easement, at the top of your screen there, it's a long red line tracing from west to east along the property owned by the school district, is an electric easement, twenty-foot electric easement. That easement is not currently in use. There are no utilities, electric or otherwise, within that easement, and is no longer deemed to be a public necessity. The second easement, easement is a forty-foot easement running from Ferry Street to Kingsway on the southeast corner of the property. That currently contains a water and sewer main. As part of this project, that water and sewer main will be relocated as the building site for the new elementary school will actually cover part of the easement on the site. So, the water and sewer mains will be relocated. That easement will no longer be required. I'll take any questions at this point on the vacation. What we would do is, upon having the public hearing tonight, the, we'll have a view of the site plan review later on in the agenda tonight, and then, directed by council, we would, since that would bring back the resolution to formally vacate both of these easements at the eighth meeting.
Just to, can I ask a question? You get rid of, I see that obviously on top, no arm, no foul. Where does the, I mean, is there another easement that's required when they move?
Yes, that's a great question. So, as part of this project, these two would be vacated, and then we are proposing the establishment of several new easements for the new water sewer line, for our electric service line, for a general utility easement along Kingsway Drive where that is not an easement right now, but there are public utilities. So, there will be several new easements established as part of this, and those will all be documented and brought back to the May eighth meeting for council consideration. So, then, all of the public utilities are covered by easements.
Any other questions? If none, let me ask if there's any motion? Okay. If there's any other questions, I will entertain any motions to open this public hearing for both Seward Anderson and elementary case. So, Councilmember Toohey, I think my councilmember Sullivan, any other comments, concerns? Not all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The highest having. If I can ask the city clerk, Lindsay Davis, to please check the attendance for the public hearing. If we have nobody signed in, this will open the opportunity for anybody to address the council regarding this matter. If there's nobody signing in, I will entertain a motion to close this, uh, this public hearing. So, thank you, Councilmember, Secretary, my councilmember Swanburn. Any other comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The highest having. Moving on to the public hearing for the City of Chaska issuance of debt on behalf of the U-Met Center. Mr. Roby, you want to explain that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. This was discussed at the April tenth City Council meetings. City Council approved resolution R twenty-two-three dot zero-one for calling for the public hearing tonight related to the debt issuance. So, again, as we're pressured, the City of Chaska is preparing to issue conduit financing on behalf of Ridgeview Medical Center. This debt issuance will provide for capital improvements and building improvements at several Ridgeview Medical Center locations, of which the Ridgeview LaSour Medical Center campus is one. Approximately one million dollars of the bond proceeds will be used to fund capital improvements here, and one of the requirements for this type of debt issuance is that because the debt is being issued out of the City of Chaska and dollars are being spent outside of Chaska, any entity, the governing body of any entity where dollars will be spent has to approve the issuance and serve as host. And so, in this case, the City of LaSour will serve as is one of the hosts, as again, approximately a million dollars of these bond proceeds will be spent here. As part of this process, a requirement is a public hearing, so the public hearing, or you look for a motion to open a public hearing tonight and hear any comments from the public on the proposal. The proposed resolution granting approval is later on at tonight's consent agenda. Again, I'll take any questions.
Zero liability.
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Joe, did they give you any clarity on what this would be besides infrastructure?
The only information I was able to receive from Ridgeview is that approximately ninety-five percent of the funds would be spent on capital equipment, lifespan greater than five years, and remaining would be spent on building improvements.
Any other questions? If not, I will not entertain a motion to open the public hearing for Ridgeview Chaska debt issuance. Mr. Sullivan, thank you. Second, Councilmember Swanburn. Any other comments, discussions, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The highest having. Do we have anybody signed up to address the council tonight regarding this matter?
No.
Instead, I will entertain any motion to close the public hearing. So, both, thank you, Councilmember Toohey. Second, my councilmember Sullivan. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? The highest having. Moving on to presentation, we will begin with Police Sergeant Oof of Office. Now, Mr. Roby, you want to introduce our police chief and our future sergeant?
I would love to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Tonight, I had the pleasure of welcoming Police Chief Aaron Tiki and Sergeant Jesus Sines. As you recall, from the April tenth meeting, Officer Sines was approved for promotion to the position of sergeant with the LaSueur Police Department. We're thrilled to have him in this role. He's a tremendous individual and a wonderful asset for our community. We're thrilled to have him, and I'll let Chief Tiki take over.
Well, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I appreciate you taking the time to hear us again tonight to square in our newly promoted sergeant. As you know, we initiated a sergeant's promotion process about two months ago. We opened that process up to both internal and external candidates. We had about seven candidates apply for that position. It was a very competitive process, which was our goal, to make it as competitive as we possibly could. I'm proud to say that even as competitive as it was, one of our own was chosen as the top candidate and promoted in that process, which speaks highly of our department. I know our character here, and I'm very proud of that. Officer Sines, now Sergeant Sines, is very deserving of this position. He serves with compassion and tenacity. One of the things I'd like about Officer Sines, since he began working at the police department, is he's always looking for that big fish. He has passion for solving tough crimes, for vindicating victims and finding justice for them, victims that cannot speak for themselves, can't find justice themselves. He has a passion for that, for investigating, you know, serious assaults, narcotics-related offenses, child protection issues, sexual assault issues, difficult cases that are not easy for just any officer to do. He has a passion for that, and it's really shown, and that was one of the reasons why he was chosen for this position. I'm very proud of that. So, I'll introduce you here to Officer Jesus Sines, who is now Sergeant Sines, and we'll do our oath of office. So, Jesus, if you could, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Sergeant Jesus Sines.
Aye, Sergeant Jesus Sines.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police sergeant.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police sergeant.
Within and for the city of LaSour and state of Minnesota.
Within the city of LaSour and the state of Minnesota.
On my honor, I will never betray my integrity.
On my honor, I will never betray my integrity.
My character or the public trust.
My character or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
And uphold the values of the community of LaSour and LaSour Police Department.
And uphold the values of the community of LaSour and LaSour Police Department.
Congratulations, Sergeant Sines.
Thank you for giving me that opportunity. I appreciate it. I'll try my best and keep serving the way I'm serving. Just thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Sorry about the kids here.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Awesome, Sergeant. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you for the board confidence.
Moving on to item Y B on the city financial report. Please do. This is what Amdo, so if you don't mind, I introduce him. I appreciate it.
I would love to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Tonight, we have with us, especially against Jean McGann with Amdo. Jean is actually very well familiar with the city of LaSour. She's worked on LaSueur's financials for a while, off the on in the past, when Amdo served as the city audit, primary auditor. So, those who have been around the city all for a long time, and I shouldn't say a long time, but a fair amount of time. I've seen Jean before, and when we ask her questions about, hey, why was this done this way seven, eight years ago? She, she's very good at providing an answer. And so, Amdo's been working very closely with our new finance director, Mr. Ryan Graff, and, and to work to get around that speed, the city's financials, and so Jean is here. Finance Director Graff is here as well, and he'll chime in whenever he feels the spirit of movement to do so. And I'll turn this over to Jean to present her Q four twenty-two financial report. And I will qualify this with saying, qualify this with, you know, Q four financial report is, is not, not always done because it's considered preliminary, right? Because we haven't, our final twenty-two audit, the, Ryan has been working very closely with Amdo in preparation for our twenty-two audit, so all of these terms, of course, are subject to some amount of change as we go through audit, but that's about it for a kickoff. I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you. As was mentioned, these are preliminary financial statements as of the end of twenty-two, and I'll be going through the different highlights, focusing primarily on the general funds, but we'll also talk a bit about the enterprise funds, as well as some variances in cash balances. So, as we go through this, we will look at cash investments, general fund, enterprise funds, et cetera, to really give you a preview as to what twenty-two looks like. As I go through the presentation, there will be some areas where I will indicate that the final adjusting entries for the year have not been completed, and so there will be some deviation from these financial statements after the audit is complete. The audit is scheduled to begin on May twenty-second. So, if we look at the overall checking and savings account, there was almost a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase from the end of twenty-one to the end of twenty-two. Now, one point to note is that checking and savings is a little over twelve million dollars, and now, as interest rates have started to increase, the city will want to start considering putting more into longer-term investments, because you are able to gain a return at this point. For the last several years, interest rates have been absolutely horrendous, and so it was almost better to keep it in more of the liquid cash, because you could get just as good of an interest rate. If we go on to the revenues for the general funds, with the revenues for the general fund, there are a couple of things that I do want to note on that. When we look at our licenses and permits, you notice we had a thirty-one thousand seven hundred and ten dollar increase over twenty-twenty-one, and that was, there were more licenses than what were anticipated in twenty-twenty-two. The other point to note is that we have a seventeen thousand dollar increase on interest on investments, and that is also notable, as I mentioned, that interest rates have been increasing. And in addition to that, fines and forfeits have increased over the budget as well, and to the tune of about, excuse me, seventeen thousand dollars as we move through that. And I apologize that, yes, I said seventeen thousand, and that's due to dirt forfeiture and vehicle forfeiture revenue that was obtained during twenty-twenty-two. As we move on to the expenditures, there are a few areas there that we do want to mention as well. Primarily, under the accounting area, there was a significant variance there from what was budgeted, and that is due to essentially the services contracted through Amdo for the interim period when there was not, you know, a permanent plan instructor and other services that were provided since that point. In addition to that, there is a eighty-one thousand dollar difference in our planning and zoning area, and that's due to a vacant position during the year. Now, if you look at the very bottom line, where you see sixty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars, at this point, you do have revenues over expenditures to the number of sixty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars, which is good, because you always want to ensure that you're maintaining your fund balance reserve, and as the city grows, it takes more, of course, to maintain the operations of the city, and so that always assists in maintaining that minimum reserve. When we look at overall cash balances, we do have some changes that I do want to draw your attention to. Within the general funds, if you look at the variance from twenty-one to twenty-two, we do have a decrease of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in the general funds, and that was really due primarily to inflation. If you look at the overall cost of fuel and, you know, just higher expenses in general, if you look at the inflationary rates for fuel alone, if you look at diesel, I think it was like a twenty-three percent increase, and gas was around sixteen percent increase, and that's just in general for what all cities, you know, were paying for increases there. In the airport fund, there was an airport maintenance grant received in twenty-twenty-two, which that explains the primary difference for the almost ninety-two thousand dollar increase within that fund itself. The next item I'd like to highlight would be the, excuse me, the improvement fund. So, with that, we have allocation from the enterprise funds to assist with the debt service As we move down a little bit further, and we look at the overall capital improvement fund, if you note, at the end of twenty-one, we had about four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and now it is showing a negative hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars right now. However, that will be replenished as we close out the year, because anytime you're doing capital improvement projects, there are allocations, say from like your water fund, sewer fund, et cetera. And so, it was just really the spending or doing capital improvements throughout twenty-twenty-two that causes the significant cash difference. If we look at other capital improvement projects, such as the twenty-two A Streets and Trails and the Equipment Certificate, as well as the North Highway one sixty-nine furniture, those are, you know, use of bonds, because there were bond proceeds issued, it's in twenty-twenty-one, and now they're being utilized. As there are additional variances in cash as we walk through this, however, they're primarily related to the enterprise funds, and as I go through the status of the enterprise funds, I will cover the variances on that. Within the water fund, there are only a couple of variances. When we look at the revenue component, in twenty-twenty-one, there was a payment from Bolton Make for twenty-three thousand dollars, and that was for the CSIC twenty-two, and in twenty-twenty-two, there wasn't any type of reimbursement on that. When we look at the expenditures, and that's primarily, we have a decrease in the amount of expenditures when we look at twenty-one to twenty-two, and that was just because of different projects in twenty-twenty-two being delayed. And the other one we wanted to point out, the water fund, is the bond interest. As you are, you have the debt that was issued for the water funds, and so there's debt service payments that need to be made, and so that's where the bond interest comes into Moving on to the sewer funds, within the sewer fund, under charges for services, we do have a variance there if we look at the, the budget to actual, as well as looking at year-end twenty-one and twenty-two, and this is due to increased usage, as well as a rate increase. And as additional infrastructure projects come into play, it's important that we do have excess revenues over expenses, primarily to be able to continue to do infrastructure improvements and mitigate the amount of bond issuances that need to be made. Additional variances on the expense side would be under supplies, and with that, so there was a large invoice from Agrocurra that was received in twenty-twenty-one, but it did not occur in twenty-twenty-two, and so that would be the primary difference under your, sorry, under your miscellaneous revenue. Other variances within the sewer fund are due to the increased cost of chemicals, and that would be if you look at the number three under supplies, that's really relative to the chemicals itself. In addition to that, there were higher utility rates, so we had a variance of almost eighty thousand dollars there, and once again, we have bond interest expense that actually decreased between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. For the electric fund, the primary significant difference here is in purchase power, and that would be if you look at item number three, we have a variance of seven hundred and, almost seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The cost of purchase power increased significantly in twenty-twenty-two, and we're still feeling those impacts now. We don't have, you know, an idea as to when that, the cost of purchase power will be reduced, but at this point, we can anticipate that we will continue to see large variances For stormwater, there's just one area I wanted to point out, and that would be under your capital outlay, and with the capital outlay, you did have a variance of almost forty-nine thousand dollars, and that was due to GIS services, as well as street names. When we look at the revenues and recycling funds, revenues and recycling funds really came out as expected. There really weren't any huge, you know, variances that were shown within this particular Within the recreation funds, the primary difference here is that there was an increase in the property tax levy for the recreation fund in twenty-twenty-two, and so we do have a variance of a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars there. And the only other variance in the recreation funds would be under miscellaneous. There was a small business grant that was received in twenty-twenty-one that was not received in twenty-twenty-two. So, that is a high-level overdue of the financial statements. I'm happy to address any questions that you might have, and I know Ryan is here, if he can help get into some of the additional details if you do have questions. Yes?
This is, I'm sure it's probably out of the ignorance, but the, the, where it says in the line items farther into the report, beyond the, the old, the detail.
Up into the detail?
The detail. One, okay, when it says full-time employees, it's, they give you, you know, there's a cost. Is that salaries plus benefits or just salaries?
On the detailed report itself, if you look down to the next line item, you'll probably see like Social Security and Medicare, PERA, those types of things. So, the salary line would just be the girl's wage. It does not include any of the benefits or taxes.
Okay, because it says full-time employee is regular, then the next line is wages, part-time, overtime.
And then go down a little bit.
Okay, Medicare contributions, health. Okay, so that's just salaries.
Correct. Right, when you have full-time or part-time, that's just the salaries itself.
Okay, then the small blue on the left, is that a cost center?
I have to. Yes, this is the whole string of the code numbers. And if you look at that, the first number you will see is one oh one. One oh one signifies it's for the general fund, and then the next five digits, where it's like four nine two oh one, that would signify the department.
Because, I mean, there's some twopower variances on the full-time employees as you go through, like, you know, one, it's a hundred and twelve thousand and a whole, but then another one, it was budgeted, but nothing was put against.
And Joe and Ryan, can you address that with the different vacancies and turnover and activity?
Sure, so we, we can certainly look at individual.
You know, I don't want to belabor that. It just seems odd that you, and it all balances out. That's, I guess, what I'm driving. You're way out of whack up here, but way under the table over here.
So, some, some things, it's probably an allocate, it comes on the allocations. So, what we try and do is, year to year, look at what our staffing levels are, where their time is being spent, where may anticipate their time will be spent in the budget, and then, as, you know, depending on the type of employee, where they primarily work, where their work ends up being, there could be a reallocation of their time during the course of the year, whether that's salary employee or NCR. Our water and wastewater employees are going to be budgeted their time between water and wastewater, because they serve as operators of both of those departments, but their time is coded as they actually work it, so they spend a little bit more time. So if they spend a little bit more time in water this year, a little bit more time wastewater next year, depending whether services are required, the allocation will change. And similarly for salaried staff. Uh, we may see that, um, it's more appropriate to, um, allocate salary staff member to the recreation department based on how much time you're spending in support of the recreation department one year. And if their, uh, job responsibilities change, we would reallocate that in the payroll system going in the following year.
But if, if you budget for it and it's zero, does that mean, you said, okay, I've got a hundred thousand dollars budgeted here and the activity turns out to be zero? Does that mean that job wasn't done or that individual moved somewhere else?
Uh, it could be, yes.
Okay. Now I do have one, just one more question. Page thirty-five. Well, in the electric fund, what is it that we wrote off two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
Those are delinquent accounts. So at the end of the, at the end of the year, each December, we, uh, city council, city staff prepare a list of delinquent accounts that accumulated over the last year. No, it's fine. And so in December of every year, you'll see a large write-off expense. Those are written off of our books and they're sent to Lusor County to be assessed on property taxes. When we collect that, it comes back getting against the write-off.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Director Anthony, staff, please. Are we looking for action on this?
Okay, thank you.
Um, gee, thank you for your report. It was very excessive. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is not technically local, but I don't think there's a lot of local business.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion with contract groups on Alan's stage where twenty twenty three listens. On your show move. The council members, first one, second by council member Sullivan. They have the discussion comments and concerns. If not, all those in favor?
All right.
Anybody opposed the eyes have. They want to. Item ninety B to twenty twenty three dash one one six. Twenty twenty three dot one seven. Except bids and awarding contracts for the twenty twenty three street maintenance. Can't wait to hear about this city engineer being. Uh, Mr. Willey, you want to start him off?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, very briefly, how are you, city engineer? Corey Bean thank with us tonight. Uh, thrilled to have him with us as always. I'll discuss two different agenda items, item nine B and nine C, both related to street maintenance. Item nine B specifically with the twenty twenty three street maintenance plan of patching the ceiling. And then in a few minutes, I might see just an overall update on the five year street maintenance plans. So I'll turn it over to city engineer Bean.
All right, thank you, Mr. Willy. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. So next few slides, I'll be presenting the bids for the twenty twenty three street maintenance project. Um, just a brief bit of background. So in in summer of twenty twenty, we adopted officially a five year street maintenance plan. At that time, we identified five years of needs. And we are currently this summer then going to be delivering on year three of those planned needs. And for the most part, it is consistent with the plan, the the project area that we're proposing. Um, the process that's been in place for for implementing and and executing the street maintenance is in the fall, we go all consistent with the plan and we we. Uh, identify project area, gather some estimated quantities needed to satisfy the street maintenance work. Um, and then throughout the winter and then early part of the spring, we organize that in the competitive bid package. Um, and then we we open open bits here uh this time each year and then evaluate that against the budget and amount. Um, and this is the second year now where we've identified two separate contracts. The first year we did just one contract. You know, some inefficiencies and just some overall, uh, you know, less value in the coordination between the two contractors. And so this year, uh, similar to last year, we separated them and we definitely noticed uh more efficiency and I think overall value, just. Reducing some of the overhead between the prime and the subs. Uh, so the two projects that we've been separating into for the the past two projects is a patching project. This project goes first. Um, it's really focused on curb and gutter and the pavement itself. And so we we do a repair of the crack and gutter, primarily focusing on the settled areas to reestablish drainage. And then any any noticeable and major pay, you know, payment failures, uh, we do a full depth patch on those. And we do a completion date of the middle of summer for the patching contract, and that allows sufficient time. For the ceiling contract to start and then be executed by end of summer. Um, the ceiling contract then is focused on the chip ceiling, uh, so they go out, they place a a layer of the two minutes oil and then followed by a chip. And and for our our three years of street projects, we've been doing a fog seal then on top of those chips. Does allow us to do a little bigger chip. Um, and so we believe there's a, there's a little more integrity with that. We've also been foregoing the crack ceiling, which is traditional to ceiling projects. And we believe with the two layers of of uh of the oil that that, uh, you know, allows for and is adequately accommodating the lack of. Of uh crack ceiling and arguably another decision with that is a lot of the payment conditions are are pretty crack intensive and so. Trying to just best value the crack filling operations and and we believe the the fog seal application um is a better value. Um, included this year for the first time, we also are going to be sealing the two minutes trails. So I'll be every trail within the city along Elmwood, Ferry, um, and then Kingsway. So that that will not be getting shipped. That would just be. Getting a layer of of ceiling oil. And then we have a completion date then, uh, the first of September for the ceiling contract. The map there on the right is is the twenty twenty three uh proposed project area. So then in regards to the bids, um, so we open them in in two sequences. The first is the patching contract. We opened those on April sixth. We did get six bids, which was great. I'd say historically, we've gotten kind of these same bidders. Um, we did see a a rearrangement in the low bid this year, though, and Nielsen black topping uh was uh was the apparent little bidder. Um, WW black topping has been historically the little bidder for the patching contract. Um, and you can see there compared to the bids, we had a good, good range and and did come in underestimated. The second bid opened then is the ceiling contract. We received three bids for them for that contract. All three bidders, I would say historically have quoted, and we did have a rearrangement then of the apparent little bidder there as well. It's been Pearson Brothers. In years past, and so we have past tent court that is the the little bidder for this year. And again, um, low engineers estimate. I think a a lot of the below engineers estimate was just in relation to the vituinous, um, both in the ceiling oil as well as the patching and. Uh, got more favorable bids than estimated. And so just trying to maximize budget to value and and project size. Um, prior to to the request for awards, then we did reach out and both contractors are agreeable to adding additional area. And we will be mindful of that, um, though, most notably in the in the Cedar Trail, this still screws court. We weren't. Sure if we were going to be able to capture that entire neighborhood, you can see on the upper right of your screen, we do believe we can now with those underages on the on the bids compared to the the estimate, which is. Uh, based on the budget. So in summary, uh, both both low bid contractors, we believe are qualified, they're experienced in the work that we're asking them to do. Um, we believe that the street maintenance project there is consistent with the adopted plan and and certainly supportive of the improvements that we're planning to make, the rehabilitations and repairs we're planning to make. Um, the project costs, including this added area, um, are within the budget that's been allocated. And so then based on that tonight, um, provided there aren't any questions, to be happy entertaining, we'll have then two requested actions, both passed via resolution to. Accept the bids and ward uh to the respective low contractors for each of the two projects, the patching and the seal. Happy entertaining any questions?
Any questions from any council members? There's not going to move on to the actual question. Okay, we'll just do a feature separate.
Yes, please.
Okay, first one is accept uh our twenty twenty three dash zero one six, accepting bids and awarding contract to twenty twenty three street maintenance project patching. We have a motion.
Some motion.
Second, council member Sullivan, second by council member Schleger, uh, any comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
All right.
Anybody opposed the eyes have. Moving on to uh our twenty twenty three dash zero one seven, accepting bids and awarding contracts for twenty twenty three street maintenance project ceiling. So move. Council member Huntington, second by council member Sullivan. Any comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
All right.
Anybody opposed the eyes have. Moving on.
All right, I'll I'll just uh stay here and continue. So, um, relatable to the action that we just passed in reference to five year street maintenance plan. Um, staff felt it was valuable just to to re repropose a plan. We have amended the the map. Kind of to continue the five year, the five year maintenance and so I wanted to uh just share that with council on this, you know, explain again the process and. The commitment that we've made to the to the adopted plan. Um, so again, a little bit of background, I I noted that we approved the five year shipment is planned in twenty twenty. Um, we are on year three of implementing that plan. And, you know, I think the the acknowledgement is that there's, there's always greater than five years of maintenance. So, you know, staff is continually to assess and. Um, and and identify the greatest priorities and really mapping those out in a in a five year window. We believe that's a, you know, kind of an acceptable window to to predict and. Monitor street conditions. Um, in the maintenance strategies, I've been really focused on the concrete curb and gutter, trying to maintain drainage. Uh, emphasis on the settled curve sections again, uh, the vituinous patching, really being mindful in the spring after the freeze and thaws, what is the driving condition of the street pavements? Um, being mindful of of the value of the patching and and how we, you know, size those areas of patching needed. And then the chipping and the fog seal, which we're uh employing here in the Sabley store, which isn't always common. And and chip seal projects is a follow up with the fog, but we feel like we're getting that value back from doing so. Um, and really the purpose of the five year street maintenance plan is to try to prolong life. Any street maintenance scene is really to uh to to try to preserve. Acceptable or in good condition pavements and and maximize longevity of them, try to try to get the most out of. To ride in the in the pavement surface that you can. Um, before before there is not value in maintaining them anymore, where they're in need of a more substantial repair, a mill and overlay. Or a full reconstruction. And I would probably argue of the the projects that we've done to date, um, you know, this year included. We're probably right at the cusp of that, where I think our maintenance is is this is really the the final maintenance that's going to be valuable. And beyond this, then we're just going to continue to allow those payments to deteriorate until we have to do something more substantial. So I don't know if maintenance is really in the window of the streets that we've touched in the maintenance plan. We certainly have. More streets that we need to do the same work to, the same maintenance, you know, to try to maximize life, but we're we're arguably right at the cusp. And I think we're using industry standards and practices just to to maximize that that longevity. Um, and and the five year street maintenance plan is in conjunction with the tenure plan. Our tenure plan is focused on reconstruction, so that's those pavements that that aren't worth. Maintenance anymore. Their their life is is beyond valuable maintenance, and so it's not cost effective to do chip seals on them anymore. Um, patching is a little bit of an anomaly, obviously, where you just some patches you can't ignore, and you go out and fill potholes and you repair what you can, but. The the sizable, you know, committed project area, um, uh, for the most part on the ten year streets, we're we're ignoring. We're we're acknowledging that those need that more substantial, more costly repairs, uh, repairs. We're investing in the streets that. That we think we can get more life out of and and where this maintenance is going to be valuable. Um, and that's noted there in that we're not, we're not really emphasizing on on the tenure, on the tenure plan streets. Um, patching for the most part, it's uh been, you know, mirroring the ceiling where we're doing the patching, we're doing the ceiling. That will shift a little bit in regards to the new, the new, you know, new projects, the tenure projects that we we do implement. Um, and and trying to make sure that we we chip seal those within that first two to five years. Uh, we've been a bit unique in our last sequence of street improvement projects where they've all been on county owned roadways and so. Uh, the city isn't responsible for the ceiling of those. The county does uh practice the same principle within that two to five year window. They do want to do, they do want to chip seal those, and you can notice that on the rural twenty two project, that's all been gypsy already. And I would, I would say the plan has been really successful to date. Um, if anyone knows the condition of Coventry last spring, right, and you and you look at it now, I think these. These projects are are prolonging and and definitely in the areas that we're focusing on need, especially in the spring conditions. Um, the lack of attention is evident, so. So in summary, I think the intent tonight was just to update uh council. I shared a little bit on the process of how we look at the plan and flow. We evaluate. We right size the project, we bid, we board, and we construct. Um, we just awarded and now we'll be constructing this summer. And so the continued investment in that, we believe, is to be really important. Um, the the, you know, the the plan is a guiding document, it's a living document. We're very much monitoring prioritization over, you know, what's on paper, and so, um, we are proposing, you know, changes and accommodations to best. Reflect what we feel uh the street conditions need. Um, and and I think our intent will be kind of uh to do a similar update on the tenure streets, uh, streets and, you know, utilities plan as well, understanding that there's. Uh, you know, there's some some updating that is necessary with that, and so kind of mirroring that, uh, we we believe there'd be value in future meeting to to dig into that. Tenure plan as well, but tonight was really just to talk to the five year plan kind of timely with the third project anticipated here this summer. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to entertain any other questions or discussions that may be warranted.
Any council members have any questions for city engineer Bean regarding the five year plan? If not, I will entertain any motions to adopt for the equal. Twenty twenty three five year street maintenance plan and direct staff continuing process of implementation. So. I'm sorry, Mr. Tewey.
Second.
Seconded by council member, uh, Swamber. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
All right.
Anybody opposed the eyes have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bean. Let's take it into uh item ninety, LaSueur Elementary, LaSueur Henderson New Elementary School. TP and PUD plan review. Mr. Willey, you want to take us into this?
I will, I'm here just because I'm going to introduce our next speaker in a moment here, but I've got the clicker so I said watch it before I was doing. Um, so as I mentioned, and I've given regular occasions, council meetings about our conversations with uh the LaSueur Henderson School District about their new elementary. Construction. Project, which is um nearly upon us at this point. I got an invitation from Juanita today, groundbreaking, so. It's happening. And so we have some members here uh from the district and their planning team in front of us, and I also have invited city planner Nate Sparks. Yeah, to to share a presentation tonight, um, have a summary of what the planning commission heard. So the planning commission met earlier this month uh to review the uh initial uh use permit and the um plan unit development. Application for the school district uh for the new elementary school, and they'll get into smart details, but. The 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 bulk of city council action uh will, we plan to have at the May eighth meeting, and so out of tonight's. Up tonight's presentation, what we are looking for is council uh firm direction uh from council to to direct staff to come back at the May eighth meeting with. All of the documents uh and resolutions required for city council action to allow this project to go forward, uh, which will include. Um, approval of the uh plan unit development, um, approval of the new easements that will be established for this project. And also the development agreement that accompanies this project. So uh at this time, I would invite uh Mr. Sparks forward, and you can walk us through. And also, this is just more generally, this is council's opportunity to to really see uh some key elements. Of the the project plan itself, all of which has been uh studied. Back and forth and sideways by city staff and also looked at very closely by the planning commission as they evaluated the plan unit development application. Which, by the way, planning commission did unanimously recommend to city council that they approve like unit development application site plan as submitted by the district at their last meeting, so.
Hi, good evening, honorable Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council. We have for you uh the. City administrator so eloquently summarized a plan unit development application and site plan for the school project and. Here's the existing site. And this is the proposed addition to the site uh that you could see, and this is what the building looks like. But uh principally, from a zoning perspective, uh, you're obligated to approve uh what is known as a plan unit development. By a conditional use permit. Which allows for the construction here, because typically you wouldn't allow two separate buildings on one property that requires a plan unit development. Which is a zoning tool designed to allow some flexibilities from the code to allow things to happen that would be better than what would happen otherwise under the straight. Zoning regulations. So with that principally, it's just the fact that it's the two buildings on one lot. And then they share circulation. Normally, you'd have them on separate lots, separate driveways, separate parking, all that, right? So this allows them to be together on the property, and then also it allows. Uh, what they're seeking is a little bit of design flexibility to allow for. An alternate building material with the with the uh gymnasium having the fabric wall. And then some modifications to the uh landscaping plan that wouldn't otherwise be allowed. And the reason that this is acceptable is because of the type of use that it is, like if you were to think that somebody came in and wanted to put up a golf dome or something like that. You would prove it in the same type of manner, right? So that's what gets you to the points where you can do that. And otherwise, the building is designed to meet your standards. The parking lot uh has the right amount of parking, the setbacks are met. So so your just general site plan, the view criteria is met there. It's a photometric plan and showing me that the light isn't going to be a problem and. Uh, we wanted to have, if you see here, uh, you can see this is what it's going to look like to the folks that live across the street. So that was one thing that we wanted to make sure everybody understood. So there's that, there would be a. A retaining wall with a fence on it on the edge of the property towards uh. Towards that neighborhood in that will be taller than what you typically allow, but that's necessary due to the topography of the area when you get into that space. So what we will have for you, uh, if you so choose, at your next meeting will be a resolution approving the initial use permit that allows the plan unit development. Which allows them to have the two buildings on one lot with some slight design flexibility uh for their plan. And that will be brought back with the easement vacation documents that we just discussed. And then also the development agreement, which effectuates the terms of the approval, then both parties side it. There's a mutual understanding what's going to happen going forward. But um, again, I mean, this. We just have some pictures of the buildings. You can see what that looks like. It's uh going to be a pretty good looking building. And uh, though that PVC fabric is something that you don't just allow on every structure, it's something that has to be allowed by a. It'll be the P U D process, so you can see what it's going to be before it would happen, but. You have any questions for me? It would be my great honor to answer them for you, otherwise that will take back the US mayor.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I do have a question. I don't know if it's for you or if it's for the school or the school. Is that just the new complete picture of the new building or is that or is part of that the old building?
This is the new bill, the entirety of the new building.
Entirety of the new, thanks. Just wanted to clarify.
From council member Huntington, this is what you will see.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with a decorative fence? Nothing else? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate their presentation.
No, so I I would say unless there's no action necessarily, um, unless someone from the council would not like staff to bring back the reputable documents at the May eighth meeting. But staff recommendation is that we bring back the regulations and documents required for action uh to button this project at the May eighth meeting.
Thank you.
Here's your, we'll bring it back.
Very good. Which takes us to circle back now to the R twenty twenty three dash one. Five, is that the level we're at right now? That's a motion.
Correct, formally consent agenda items six.
And um, you can review this for this one. We agree what we just talked about. It's some kind.
I would actually invite uh council member Sullivan to ask his questions, these questions.
So I guess I pulled this number one for the fact that I do not believe that something such as the public name should be put on consent agenda. This. Definitely consent agenda is a routine agenda item, and this isn't something that you're seeing. Second, my concern for the simple fact that as we watched everybody leave, that's a number except for the newspapers and staff. Um, there was no participation from Ridgefield's behalf. At this meeting, or any clarifying as to what they are going to be doing in our community. Um, with that being said, I've always been a strong hand, you know, for you, so I'm not trying to be insulted, but it would be appreciated to have them participate in the conversation on what they're looking to do. Um, because even though we're a whole city, and now I've not, many of the states that you to or legal Minnesota cities follow the definition of a whole city for a. For this type of bond. Um. There's still this obligation to the city council to disclose any. Potential issues that they could run into with zoning or anything that involves city matters. So if they, if they intend to spend a million dollar building. For example, which we don't know, right, other than your word of mouth, what you've heard, right, Joe? Um, without any clear definition, whether they're going to spend a million dollar time, if they spend a million dollars to build a garage, build a building. We could run into zoning planning issues, which is a responsibility of this council. So at this time, I strongly feel um that I could not vote in favor of this without a clear definition of what their intentions are to use this one. And I appreciate the investment in our community. But I also think there's a obligation of this city council to understand that there is obligation to us to do our due diligence.
Just one back up real quick, um, uh, Mr. Sullivan, you you expressed it on the uh public hearing was on the consent agenda. It was before.
No, no, the public hearing was prior to the consent agenda.
Correct.
But I removed it from the consent agenda because I do not believe. Right by statute, consent agenda or legal Minnesota city standards, which is what we follow in our basic rules of order. Consent agenda are routine items. This is not a routine item, in my opinion.
Um, we have invited Ridgefield to be a part of one of our meetings rather soon. Is that in May?
Yes, the next meeting.
Okay. Um, is this, is this item something that as we were conceived with them, you?
Um, to an extent, uh, they plan to uh close on the debt first, close on the debt issues first week of May.
Set the old debt issue or?
The city of Chaska debt issuance, yes.
That, I'm, and that's just my opinion, right? Like, but there is an obligation. I I heard the definition of city, right? That's the terminology that's been being used. I've heard us, you told that there's no obligation back to us in regards to the. Revenue or repayment of this, and I understand that, but there is said for the obligation. That is our obligation as council members of mayor to be responsible if issues arise. Where does it go to mayor? I don't have that answer. I'm just, that's what I'm reading in state's edge.
This this is a bond that's being taken out by the city of Chaska.
Correct.
Is it not? And the and the hospital, of course, is now owned by Ridgefield.
Correct.
Is it not? Okay. I'm comfortable with moving ahead with the vote, I.
And. And I'm by, we move ahead with the vote, I'm just saying that at this time, without any review participation, I think it's distasteful on Ridgefield's part to not have representation on the table. When you talk about that amount of money.
Well, I I don't.
And the fact that there is an obligation of this council.
I don't think this is bad taste in your party.
We will disagree, we'll agree to disagree, right?
Yeah.
And I'm not here to argue with you, Sean, or America, we apologize.
It's okay.
But I'm I'm stating a fact, that there is an obligation of this council to do our due diligence. And I don't think. Without knowing what that money is being spent on, I don't think we're doing our due diligence moving forward. So where it goes from there, that's my opinion. That's, I I've been elected to represent. This is the research that I've done.
And I partially agree with the fact that there's no representation here. I'm I'm disappointed in something that is potential to benefit the child of a million dollars, that there isn't a representation here explaining it. Um, I, whether it, sure, though, everything will happen through the proper channels, this are its. Um, the right permits and and reading regulations, but it is kind of disappointing. That. We aren't being respected like. Say that, but the city, the school, district, that entity, if they didn't come and represent, even if you're only here for five minutes. When your thing comes up. I don't, that bothers me, and then not knowing what is that money that you're speaking of.
I think if my if my memory serves me correctly, most of these other council members were here, you were there, I was there. Mr. Willy, um, we we met with them for a short period. I think, I think there was a um. An offer, we wanted them to be at this meeting, if I remember right, but it was decided it wasn't necessary because it seemed to be pretty routine. We made a pretty clear understanding of what was going to happen.
But I thought there was a mention that please come prepared to to explain what this is for. How the money would be spent.
And that's the May meeting.
Yeah, I guess that's more the May meeting.
Yeah.
So it could be put this off to the May meeting, but they're going after the bond before that, is that what you're saying?
Correct, so um. The requirement that um. I completely appreciate council member Sullivan's comments. The requirement for the public hearing, the requirement for the city of LaSueur's approval. Is um, for the city of Chaska and Ridgefield Medical Center to. To take advantage of. Tax exempt status of the bonds. So it's an IRS requirement that.
So it's an IRS requirement that the city council reviewed, um it's an IRS requirement, so if if we had similarly went back in twenty-ten when the city of La Sore um partnered with Minnesota Valley Health Center at the time to sell bonds to act as conduit financing, if any of those dollars had been received by the city of La Sore, passed on to Minnesota Valley and then spent in another community before we even sold those bonds, if we wanted tax exempt status on those bonds, we would have needed to seek the approval of other communities, and of course all those dollars which met here in town. So it is the actions that are strictly because of the IRS requirement.
And I and I think, Joe, and I I appreciate that answer, I I followed that throughout this, I think the part that catches me is that in in the state statute, it's tax law nineteen eighty-six, it says the city council does retain the responsibility to the bond purchasers to disclose any material facts they may know of that could impact the bond, such as remaining approvals for zoning approvals or provisions of utilities. So without them disclosing, in my opinion, without them disclosing what that million dollars is being used for, we cannot give faith to say that we've done our due diligence. So that, like I said, I'm one vote of the table, that is my opinion.
Very good. Well, we understand your concern, we understand your concerns, you have something to share, Mr. Sullivan?
Just curious, what's the total amount of the bond that they're picking off?
As I recall, it's north of fifteen million dollars, the majority spent in the city of Chaska.
And we're just a part of that.
Correct, Chaska, Delano and La Sore. We sort of for the improvements in the Ridgefield here at La Sore.
If I can make a motion to adopt resolution R twenty twenty-three dash zero one five.
Thank you, council member Slumber, we have somebody who wants a second. Also, I can thank you, council member Huntington, any other discussion, comments or concerns? If not, all those in favor?
I I.
We have four eyes, and those opposed?
Aye.
Aye? One aye?
I said aye.
Very good, thank you. Um moving on, um thank you for your discussion and your concerns, I appreciate that. I can't remember where it. Right, I need some appreciation. I need some appreciation, as always, we'll start with council member Huntington.
Thank you, sir. I have two. I didn't mention in our last meeting, uh I was out of town during our pack meeting, but uh just want to mention in March, the council member booked a hundred and sixty hours in March. And as I found out today, as of last Friday, they already have a hundred and some hours already booked there. I'll get more of the details next for your meeting. Then secondly, uh more of a safety issue, public safety issue. Southwell season is well at hand across the street from my house. And people are disregarding the no parking sign on the side of the residence. Uh I say that only because of safety reasons, because cars being parked on both sides. Uh even a no parking zone, it causes a lot of issues with kids running back and forth across Kingsway. And I appreciate no parking on the no parking sentence, and that's all I have.
Thank you, councilor Huntington, moving on to council member Schlier.
Few items, I had a region I full board meeting on the twelfth, a couple of issues that came out of that. They have a high revolving loan fund balance and they wanted to let each of the city's EDAs know that they have funds, they want to loan them out. So they just want to make sure the EDAs are aware of that. The board also has openings for the following seats in case anyone is interested in applying, they're looking for a high school student, college student and a school board representative. The planning commission meeting was held, they held a public hearing on the school's planned unit development and they recommended it as it was written and submitted. They also further reviewed the future of the city forum, which is, I'll reiterate, it's going to be held on October fourteenth at the high school commons area um and until noon. And I I also attended a legislative and communications meeting for our night this morning. And there's a resource city officials or resource county officials meeting Wednesday in.
Thank you, council member Schlier, moving on to council member Sullivan.
Uh the only thing I have is we need insight, I don't think there's anything drastic to discuss from there. We got a lot of updates with the RFP clauses, one of the ones is nine nine, it's the way it goes to pause.
Thank you, um moving on to council member Slumber.
Um if we were going to get some info on the golf simulator, I would like to have it from every month from its inception. Obviously, March and April are going to be two of the highlights as people gear up, eventually summer does have to get here. Um just would like to uh thank Mr. Roby and let him know I appreciate his interaction with the carnival people to uh clear up any misconception that there may be about what exactly happened when they were here last year, so thank you for that.
Thank you, uh council member Tui.
Yes, I'd like to give a shout out to the public works department. Had a pretty good sized sinkhole over at Grace Lutheran Church, and I mean it was big enough to fall into. And uh was hard to see because that's where they plow all the snow. And I go on a walk every day and I saw it there. Contacted the police department, they came out, put cones. Long story short, just over a week and it's done, tip of the hat, well done.
That's it, thank you. Council member Williams.
Um we did have that hospital board meeting, there's another one this month, and um which is a reminder that there's a hospital Ridgeview foundation event that's happening this Friday, if anybody is interested, let me know, I can take it for sure, so. That's happening in um in fire technologies, as been told by the temporary liquor license, they got one of the, like, well, good, good move on their part. Um HRA meeting last week, they do have a couple of units opening up yet that are available, just want to put that out there. And that there is a four-day hot audit that's going to be happening in June.
Thank you, council member Wims, I have nothing to share tonight, uh with that, then I will entertain a motion, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Entertain a motion to uh move into our closed meeting schedule.
Oh.
The two general.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll take a motion, I'll take a five minute recess.
We want a recess in the first, so we will take a recess and then and then formally adjourn.
No, we got, we got a close session back out.
Very good, recess now, we'll come back and get rid of the close session, thank you.
Always my favorite part of school recess.
Yeah.